We call a special meeting of the Apache Junction City Council to order. Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Strubel?
Here.
Councilmember Waldron?
Here.
All members present. Do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
Kathy, do you want to explain why we're here?
Sure. Actually, it's a requirement of state law after every election, and not just for the city, but for county, federal, state. The local governing body has to convene to adopt the results of the election. It's called a canvas of votes. And while there's no requirement for it to be done by resolution, by doing so, it puts the entire election results in a single document. So if somebody wanted to look it up years from now, they can just go to that document. You do have in front of you Resolution Number 1828 that includes all the results from both Pinell and Maricopa County, and it includes all of the requirements of state law, including the number of ballots cast, the number rejected, and the totals for each category. And today is the last day by statute. The requirement for the canvas is not less than six, no more than 20 days following the election, and today is the 20th day.
Okay. So...
Was we gonna have a motion to turn it down and go back to the drawing board?
No. I'm not sure there's anything allowing that in state law. I hate you.
So there will be a motion made on this?
The motion is just the title of the resolution itself.
While...
Your Honor.
While we're here, there's been some question about campaign signs and the 10... Can we discuss that now that because a lot of that ties into the canvas, I've heard? And do they have to come down 10 days from the vote or 10 days from today?
I think we could generally talk about that, and I would say the 10 days that you're referring to, Mr. Mayor, would probably start... You start counting tomorrow because today would be the day that you officially accept the results. That's how I would interpret it.
Okay.
And that would be for city-related campaign signs. We have no authority over county, state, or federal.
That's correct.
But if they're in our city, if they're off the ballot and they're in our city, we can have staff take them down, correct?
If they're in the... There's some rules regarding right-of-way, but generally if people are not going to be in the primary, then I think you could ask them to take their signs down. And if they don't, at one point, they can be removed. The candidate would have to be called to state where the signs are located. They would have to be given a certain amount of time to come and get them. And then at one point, if that date passes, then the city can dispose of them.
Okay. A lot of people still have that question.
Yes.
They're very annoying. So, Robyn, you were getting ready to make something important.
I'll just do the motion if you'd like it.
Okay. Yes.
If you want that. Okay. I move that Resolution Number 18-28, a resolution of the mayor and the City Council of the City of Apache Junction, Pinell, and Maricopa Counties, Arizona, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August 28, 2018, be approved.
Second. I heard a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
And Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Strubel?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
In unanimous, Your Honor. And this actually concludes our election cycle. The next thing would be the seating of the council members, which the code says at the first regular meeting in January, which next year happens to fall on New Year's Day. So it'll wind up being the 15th of January, which is your next immediate meeting in that month. The key to it is, is that all of the successful candidates have to have filed their campaign finance reports by that time. If not, I'm not sure what happens.
By January 15th?
I don't think I could swear again.
Kathy, by January 15th or January 1st?
15th.
I would get them in. There's two cycles. There's two timeframes. There's the post-primary, and then if you choose to do so, there's the committee termination.
So the first meeting of the new year will be on the 15th?
That's correct.
Work session on the 14th, probably?
Correct. Yep.
So the work session will be with the present council, and then the next day will be the new council?
Yeah. The present council starts off the regular meeting on the 15th, and then there's the switch with the transition, and then after that, it's the new council.
Okay. Any more questions on this meeting? So I will adjourn this meeting, and then I'll call into session, the regular work session. Roll call.
Oops. Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
I'm still present.
Okay. Councilmember Strubel?
Here.
Councilmember Waldron?
Here.
All members present. Do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
Presentation and discussion of the landscaping and maintenance responsibility of the property owners of Santa Fe Square. Larry?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We need to go to the W drive, also Matt, or whatever it's called on... There you go. And then it's at the bottom, I think. Oh, did you reorder them? There you go. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just to set the stage, I had explained this to the neighbors. Some folks don't know how the City of AJ operates. Work sessions are informational items to the council. So I did send them a letter last week notifying them of the meeting. If they want to speak, they could come tomorrow night to the Call to the Public. Again, no decisions or actions are made tonight. It's really just to kind of get everybody up to speed. So just an overview, Santa Fe Square is a 10-lot subdivision. It's on the south side of 16th Avenue. It's east of Idaho Road. It's just east of the fire station. It was rezoned from General Rural to CR3 in 2002 by that ordinance number. The plat was approved in 2003 by the council. Went through the preliminary plat, final plat process was approved by council resolution. And the final plat, the plat was recorded in 2003 in December. So there is no HOA for this subdivision. It is a straight zoning subdivision. The subdivision does have CCNRs, covenants. I don't know what the C stands for. Codicils, restrictions, those are deed restrictions. So they are recorded for the subdivision as well. I'll get to that in a minute. So there was a question by one of the neighbors, you know, did the city ever accept the original landscaping? So the issue that the residents, there is the issue of maintenance of the landscaping. So this is a little bit unusual for some of the city, maybe not so unusual in 2002 in that there is no HOA, and that the... And I'll show you with some graphics here. There is an area that is behind the sidewalk. That's right-of-way. Then there's an additional area that's owned by the homeowners, but it's outside their back wall. So it's their land, but it's along the frontage. So there was a question by one of the neighbors, you know, did the city ever accept the landscaping that was supposed to be installed by the developer? So I do have the original file. It was accepted by Steve Abraham, who was a former planner here at the city.
Who was the developer?
The developer's name is Niles... Nilson. Nils Nielsen was the original developer. So during the discussion of the preliminary plat, I found in the file, there was a discussion about maintenance of landscaping buffers, and it was very clear in that discussion. Most of the discussion was about 17th Avenue. 17th Avenue is to the south of this property, and whether it was a city-maintained street or not. But the maintenance of the landscape area, the original developer had said that will be the adjacent abutting property owners. So that all went through, was discussed at the plan commission, at the council. I think Mr. Waldron may have been the chair of the commission at the time. So I went through all the minutes of that to go through the file. So from day one, the maintenance responsibilities were outlined to be that of the adjacent property owners. So they are found on the final plat. I have a copy of that. I can throw it up there if you want on the overhead, and also contained in the CCNRs, which I have. So essentially, this is from the CCNRs, and it says that there's a retention area that actually two property owners own half a retention basin. So one of the owners is here tonight. They own the east half of the retention basin. It says the owners of lots three and four respectively responsible for the retention areas. There's really only one, et cetera. They have to maintain shrubs, bushes, watered, replace them within 30 days as needed. In addition, there's a 20-foot landscape buffer along 16th Avenue, and those are the responsibility of lots one and eight, nine, and 10. So again, it simply says the same thing. So this is in the CCNRs that are recorded for the subdivision. So the... Why are we here? They actually found an earlier complaint from 2013. I didn't know how that was resolved, but in talking to the neighbors, they do remember someone from the city coming out about four years ago. There was a discussion that they were supposed to maintain all the way to Winchester, which didn't make sense to me either. But in any event, there... And I have a picture of this tree that fell that nobody heard. Just a joke there. But the... There was a complaint about a tree that was received that fell last summer. So Rick Mattern, our code officer, went there the next day, and we're not sure, but the tree... Who removed the tree? We think it was... We're not sure. Could be Public Works, could have been the C team, could have been the prisoner crew. We don't know. The tree disappeared. Then the idea was to go let the neighbors know of their maintenance responsibility. So it did get away from us between September and July. Finally got around to sending them a letter. That letter was sent essentially letting all the 10 lot owners know that six of the owners had maintenance responsibility. So didn't... I heard from two property owners at that time. One actually never got the letter. Somehow got lost in the mail from our fabulous post office. But then August 27th, I sent another letter, kind of extending the deadline. So one of the owners agreed, okay, I'll do the landscaping. So I didn't really set a date. It was going to be November. The hot weather, they didn't want to do it. So a second letter went out on August 27th. So then on September 5th, I set up a meeting with one of the homeowners, and then everybody showed up, which was fine because really that was what I wanted, the original letter, to kind of get everybody. I offered to meet with them whenever in that first letter. But we did have, I think, four of the owners represented. I did talk to... Then I recently sent out last week letting everybody know about this meeting. So all 10 property owners got the letter and a copy of tonight's agenda with an explanation on what a work session is and what the Call to the Public is. So everybody got that last Thursday, probably Friday. I think it went out on Thursday. So again, 10-lot subdivision, four lots have zero maintenance responsibility. The retention basin, and I talked to Sam Georges, our engineer today, project development engineer, there's a significant amount of off-site flow that comes down 16th Street that was designed to flow into this retention basin. And then that off-site flow is supposed to be accounted for in the design of the retention basin and heads to 17th. So I could... I don't have them with me, but the... There is a pipe, an 18-inch pipe, so that when the basin fills up to a certain height, that off-site flow continues through. Sam told me also that a dry well was installed a number of years later because we require these retention basins to perk within 36 hours. So it wasn't draining properly. We don't want mosquitoes, so the developer went in and put in a dry well. So the other thing of note here is that some of the lots along 16th Avenue have different frontages. So one lot has a 50-foot frontage. The other lot has a 97-foot frontage. So in one sense, one property owner has twice as much maintenance responsibility as another. So it's somewhat peculiar. I just wanted you to know, 10-lot subdivision, four have no maintenance responsibility, the other six do. And in the case of the four, there's varying lot widths that front 16th Avenue. So in one case, they have twice as much maintenance responsibility as others.
You said that you could put that up on the...
I'm going to. I'm getting there. Yep. So the... Some of the original homeowners signed a document that said they acknowledged that they... Of the six, I found four that signed it. One had refused to sign it, basically acknowledging that they have maintenance responsibility. So four of the six property owners have said at that curbside meeting, one called me later and said they're happy to continue to maintain their part of it. The other aspect of this is Public Works. I talked to Liz and Mike. There's nowhere in the city that we maintain private property. We do maintain areas along developments, but that is right-of-way. So at this point, we don't maintain any private lands that are landscaped. So this, how that shows up on your screen, I got kind of zoomed in and zoomed out. Anyway, I'll use the mouse. Okay. So this is the retention basin. There is an outlet that goes down to here. If you... If I were to go back in time and look at Google Earth, there was a major wash that kind of came through here, and I think it connected to where this outlet is. So this lot owner, Lot Five and Lot Four, they each maintain half a retention basin. I did see a video from this owner here. There, when we had those rains a few weeks ago, there's a massive amount of water that goes flowing here. So this is incorrect. This shows... Green means right-of-way. So this is a correction that needs to be made on our GIS, but the... I'll try to zoom in here, but you can see this is the wall. So between the wall and the right-of-way is about 20 feet. So their lot line actually goes to this light blue-gray line here. So all the homeowners in these four lots, they're supposed to maintain the landscaping between the wall and the right-of-way. I think the next side was intended to be a zoom-in. Yeah. So again, these folks have 97 feet of frontage. These are in the 60s. This one is 50. So this is another one. I think this is 65. This is 60. This is about 50 feet. So again, the deed restrictions, the plat envisioned that the adjacent property owners, these four, plus the two I showed you on the retention basin, are maintaining that. So this is the retention basin. When those heavy rains come, I don't know if the next picture shows it better, but basically the water, you know, came out of the bank here, if you will, and there's a water line that you can see here. So it does... And the previous picture doesn't really show it, but the outlet is back here, and somewhere in the middle there is a drywall. So again, there's a little bit of landscaping left around the perimeter, but not much. The landscape plan calls for a lot more landscaping than is here.
Are they expected to mow this, or what are they expecting?
They're expected to, according to that deed restriction, they're to keep it weed-free because we don't allow weeds over 10 inches. And the original landscape, if a tree dies, they're supposed to replace it. That's what that previous... I can go back to that deed restriction. This is back in 2017. That is the tree that did not fall, but severely overgrown, overhanging the sidewalk. The tree that died is kind of in this area over here. That was trimmed back. Again, not sure who trimmed it back, and the other tree is gone. Some newer photos. This is the landscaped area in front of the first house. There is some places where there's not much left and not being maintained. The residents did talk about finding a lot of trash and needles and things like that in this area. This is the homeowner with 97 feet of frontage. There is a little... You can't see it from this kind of a poor picture of the time of day I took it, but there's like a notch in the wall here, so there's like an L here and a nice convenient place where there was a lot of trash. I didn't see any needles, but you could see that someone might hang out there. So the homeowners that I met that day asked to be heard. This is... They're not being heard tonight, but I'm presenting the case. But they essentially, four of the six, said we'd like the city to take over the maintenance. It's beyond their means at this point. I thought there could be some other options. One would be if all six homeowners got together, put out a bid, it would be cheaper instead of having six landscapers over there. Some are free to maintain it themselves. So that's everybody working together. Is there a cheaper way for everybody collectively to bid it out just like we do and get someone in there, a professional, to maintain the landscaping? That's an option. Individuals can continue the maintenance. Obviously, that's been somewhat problematic. I did suggest forming an HOA. Maybe they've spread the cost to all 10 lots. I mean, I don't know the feasibility of that, but should six homeowners have to maintain it for all 10, so to make it? So maybe I missed some. Maybe there's some other options. The city, if the city took over maintenance, how would that work? It would require an amendment to the plat because then we'd probably be amending the boundary, the lot lines. They'd have to amend the CCNRs. That's an option. Maybe no city action. The city expects the current homeowners to maintain everything. There is in the zoning code, that was mailed to them, there is a maintenance in the zoning code. There's a responsibility adopted in our zoning code that says folks have to maintain their landscaping. Maybe somewhere in the middle, the landscaping plan is from 2002. It probably is even more strict than our current landscape ordinance. Another option would be for the city to allow maybe a more modest landscape plan. But it's clear that none of the irrigation is working, or maybe on some of it is. But what folks told... A lot of the stuff died because of the irrigation. There are six different meters, so each homeowner who has landscape responsibilities, they have two meters. I think one for landscaping and one for their house. Homeowners expressed that it was probably not the best when it was put in. One homeowner said they had a $100 bill. They've shut it off. Another homeowner, none of it worked. So some of them, I don't think were aware, if they were new owners, that there was a box out there that controlled, oops, excuse me, landscaping outside their wall. So I'm going to go back to any pictures or any thoughts, discussion? Again, I'm just... I'm trying to be respectful of neighbors. They wanted to let their issue be heard before the city council. That's what we're doing tonight. There's no action tonight, and staff is prepared to, I guess... We don't have direction to staff, but head nods or thoughts would be appreciated.
Your Honor, I'd ask Larry to give us some thoughts, give some ideas behind it. We certainly can go and visit with homeowners and get some thoughts. We'd love to hear kind of your thinking on this. Major, from my standpoint, from a major public policy standpoint, when you have not ever had the public policy to direct staff to go onto private land to do that, there are many out there.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, take on one, it's a precedent setting. So I see a lot of other opportunities to go work with Larry and work with our residents to come up with other thoughts, but love to hear your thoughts.
Krista?
So one question I have, as you said that the... And this is everywhere, that the requirement is to maintain the trees and the... What does maintain mean? Maybe growing down to the ground is maintaining for me, but not you. Is there a clear description of what maintaining means?
In this case, I think the... That's, to me, what it meant. Now, the city doesn't necessarily enforce CCNRs, so the city doesn't go in and enforce CCNRs. But this is what... They could sue each other, so if one of the lots said, hey, you're not maintaining your landscaping, you're supposed to do that. Usually, an HOA would go after a homeowner. In this case, the CCNRs are for everybody's benefit, so one of the 10 could... Or nine of the 10 could go off after one. I can... The city code essentially says, and we've had this before, we had a commercial property, they removed 100% of their landscaping. So we've... That was part of a rezoning. So there was an adopted landscape plan. We told that commercial property, you have to go replace what was there. Now, it could be a different plan, but it would have to meet our current code. So you have... So when the plantings were installed, and again, there was some question as to what was there and what the quality was. Again, this... These folks here, they live in Wyoming, and again, I didn't get a chance to talk to them. I think they hired somebody to do this. So again, you have six different people with six different capacities as to how they can maintain it.
Well, one concern too, if you look at the one tree that was trimmed by unknown, it's not even. It looks like it could... A storm could... It's trimmed on one side. It's not trimmed on... It's not even trimmed right. People may not... Once a tree gets to be that size, yeah.
Right. So this, again, may be unusual. Are there... I don't know of other subdivisions. We could ask Rudy, but this could be the odd man out, where it's the only subdivision in the city that has this 20-foot landscape strip with six different owners over the last 14 years, six different property owners who've changed hands. Again, everybody should have known that they had this responsibility when they went to the closing and looked at their documents. The one owner who's been there from the beginning said they're happy to continue to maintain. Again, one person, there were these releases signed. One person didn't refuse to sign it. That didn't make their obligation go away, but I guess they didn't like the idea. So again, I'm the messenger bringing the message from the neighbors who, again, some are beyond the capacity to do the maintenance. Personally, I guess they... Financially, I don't know either, but...
Your Honor?
Yes.
You know, if this gentleman from Wyoming is paying somebody for this landscaping, why can't the other homeowners think about chipping in for the shorter part and have them do that at the same time?
Could be. That was one of the suggestions. Could be, that was one of the suggestions, that again, if all six property owners did it together, they might get three bids and might, you know, pick it that way. And it would be.
I do have a concern about the private property part of it. That we start setting a.
Yeah, I agree. We don't want to set that kind of precedent. And it's really a shame that, that all 10 property owners aren't willing to, or can't, or what have you, pitch together to make their neighborhood beautiful. I mean, that's what we do in our neighborhoods. But if the city were to take this over, there's probably 100, 200 properties in town that'll be calling the next day and making their appointment for their place. So I think that's a very poor way to handle that. However, I do like the idea of perhaps looking at the landscaping rules and determining if they're maybe a little bit too stiff. If maybe we're requiring less now in our landscape packages than we're being required at that point. I think that's one thing that could be looked at.
Your honor?
Yes.
In going over the documents that I found, in three different places, it specifically gives the requirements of the maintenance from those lots. And what I found is there's two original owners still there. And one owner bought from another owner, but the other seven were all bought in different phases of repossession. Where you don't necessarily get all the paperwork that you would get from the builder themselves. But having it identified in three different spots, in places that everyone had to sign that they received the document. But in that document, it also talks that with 75% of the neighborhood, they could set up their own agreement. So you don't need 100%, even though there's only 10 people. But that would be the most economic way to. All of the printouts in the MLS, they were all excited that there was no HOA. And they said it in multiple places. Well, sometimes there's a cost, even if there isn't an HOA.
Larry, how have you met with, have you met with all 10? Have you met with seven at a time? How, and how do you plan to continue meeting?
The folks from Wyoming, we emailed them, because the first time we sent it, it came back. So we had to track them down, where they lived in Wyoming.
So you've just been going one-on-one, you haven't.
No, I did, I did meet, I offered to meet, the very first letter, I'll meet you on a Saturday, whenever you want, we can go meet and discuss it. So at the last, the last time I was out there, four of the six homeowners were represented. The one homeowner said, we're happy to continue to maintain it, they don't want any problems with the city. I did not have a chance to, we traded voice messages with the folks in Wyoming. So collectively, again, I can have a meeting with all of them when folks are here. Again, one of them said, I don't want any problems with the city, we'll do our maintenance. They don't, they don't want any special privilege. The folks in Wyoming, I did not, it wasn't.
Are there still water meters there? Because there's a minimal, minimum fee every.
That I don't, yeah, there are boxes, there are meter boxes outside the fence. Again, this is somewhat peculiar to have 20 feet of your property that's outside your back. So some of them would like to see, you know, can they get their 20 feet back? And then they, I guess you would just maintain along the right-of-way. But when it's there, I think it looks nice. I think that's what the city was looking for back in 2003 or '04. Now, the mechanism of whether it made sense to, as Councilmember Reverend says, it's not a planned development, so we couldn't force an HOA. And folks, some like HOAs, some hate HOAs. So in this case, this apparently was the mechanism for the developer to develop, and then they're done. So we accepted landscaping back then, the city expects it to be maintained, that's the rub here, really.
And then back to that basin, do you say that two of the landowners have this?
Two landowners, yep, I can go back to the, so you can, this yellow line, this is their GIS. So their lot line starts up here, comes down, comes back and cuts it right in half. And the same thing for this owner, comes here around the back, and they each own half. Again, it was that, the way it was done. But there's stormwater that's developed within the development, that two people have to maintain for the other eight, if you will. And then there are off-site flows, which were accommodated. But if that stuff silts in, there were complaints, or, not complaints, but mentioned that when the church was built, there was a whole lot of runoff that came off that church, that, I don't know if our silt fences weren't up, but a lot of mud came down 16th and down right into this basin. So it is kind of a regional facility, if you will, so that makes it a little bit different. These two folks have to maintain something that accepts off-site water. And most developments, that you have to pass the water through, but do, there's the expectation that neighbors or folks have to, it's highly unusual that there's not an HOA to maintain this, because then you can spread the costs out.
As of right now, could they do what they want? Could they put a community garden in there and start planting their own stuff and?
I guess if the city, they would get flooded out periodically, but I guess during the growing season, some winter rains might help it. But I guess if the city agreed to some landscape modifications and folks could plant something else in there. I mean, I don't see why you couldn't use that space for a dog park or community garden. But again, these people own it, they own half of it. So they would be expecting some liability if, I guess, themselves, they could put a piece of tape down the middle and say, this half will have a garden and the other half will or won't. But I don't see why you couldn't, but it doesn't kind of lend itself to that, really, but.
How strange.
And again, I didn't put them in here, but if you do go back with Google Earth on your own, you can do that little clock and you can go backwards. And you can see that in about 2007 or '08, there was a lot more bushes, at least here. Hard to say, there was a tree stump here, I saw these, I don't know if they're original or not, these cacti. But again, I'm giving you, tried of the city perspective, the homeowner's perspective. I do want to reiterate that these same folks can come down here tomorrow night and have three minutes and give you their thoughts.
So from initial conversations, nobody is interested in starting an HOA?
They're pretty much vehemently opposed to, at least a couple of the vocal folks said, you know, we moved here because we don't want to live in an HOA. But at the same time, I don't know, I think a matter of 10 people are getting benefit from this. And even some off-site, if you will, that there should be some community spirit here, where all 10 would chip in and want their subdivision to look nice.
Brian, could you contact the water company and see what, is that Arizona water, or whose area is this?
It says Apache Junction.
Could we check and see what the status of those meters are?
Yes.
So we have a feeling that some of the residents are listening right now, right?
Some of their folks are here tonight, yes, they are.
And also, if they would let their neighbors know that this, this will be broadcast as of, possibly tonight, but tomorrow they can watch and see what we discussed. That way they can all be on the same page.
Okay. And again, some might talk tomorrow night, and then after that, you know, we can meet with them again. I've offered several times to meet with them individually, as a group.
But they can find this discussion on the city website and then on, possibly on Channel 11 tomorrow.
So one is from, lives in Wyoming, or do the rest of them live here around all these? Of the affected property owners, yes, they live in the area. One is a property owner, I think they rented to someone in their family, they, I think they live in Mesa. So they're in the area. There's one, I think, a mailing address that looks, I don't, I have to double-check it, I'm not sure if it is. So I'm not sure if they're all owner-occupied. I know one is not, but I don't know about all of the rest of them. So that's all I have for that one, thank you.
Any more questions? So I think that's the last item on the agenda, correct? So we'll be adjourned until tomorrow.